I'd like to call this a meeting to order. Four members are present, one is absent. We have established quorum. I do need to administer an oath to anyone who plans at speaking at today's commission. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? I have to say I do?
(inaudible)
Alright, thank you. First on the agenda is disposition of the last meeting minutes. I am absent, so I abstain from voting on their acceptance. But I'm sure Shar did a great job.
Um, I think I saw, everything looked good to me.
I read it.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Now, we have no cases on the agenda today unless there's some last-minute emergency or anything. I didn't think so. Communications is next up. We're going to discuss business zones, looking at, brought this last up in April, about modifying what the business zones, how they were described in the zoning code. We could do that. That is first off, is there another, any other communications that we, since this may be a lengthy discussion, that we should do first? Is there any?
Not that I know of.
My only communication was that you have a copy of the appeal that was filed in the integrated services case.
I guess the other one would be the public here in my city council is going to have for the rezoning of far east side, right? That's the number 12.
It would have to be the 13.
13? It is? Okay.
Alright. Okay, I'd like to kind of borrow a page from Nancy, if you wouldn't mind, where we, when we looked at the-
It's always dangerous.
I thought it worked out well. When we were a little more specific, I think it helped a lot when we were looking at the far east side neighborhood rezoning, when we just sort of looked specifically at the R2. So, in that same vein, I suggest that we just, for today's discussion, just look at the B3 general business zone, since that's pretty much the most all-encompassing of all the three business zones. And then, you know, if we can kind of try to get a mix that we think works, we can move on to the other ones at progressive meetings. So, B3, again, what, you know, this has not been updated since we last met in April. The key things that I want commission members to look at is that the, that we're listing the principal permitted uses, that, you know, that we feel like we're including, all that should be in B3. Also, Shar did print off a version of the current city code, B3 as well, it's the smaller handout of the zoning code information.
I think it's just three sheets.
You have two of them.
Yeah, one's three sheets and one's eight sheets, I think, or four, I guess.
The main difference between what I'm seeing here is that the, if you look at the B3 pages, the old B3 will start, B3 general business zone will start with A, principal permitted uses, whereas the new and improved, quote-unquote, would be starting with a purpose.
Yeah.
So it has an intent in there. If you look at B3-
So this is existing?
Yeah.
That would-
Old versus new.
Existing's on page 5, 11.
And the other one is on 6 or 13.
Thank you. The, I'll kind of go through the list of what I wanted to look at, then we can go piece by piece. The other one was, besides looking at the permitted, permitted principal uses and limitations, was to consider, there was talk at the last meeting that we reviewed this, about making a percent of the parcel that must be developed principally to be considered for residential above. Another item was retail or service establishment. There was discussion about how we would define that. Right now, the definition that I'm proposing, it has to do with the value of the product sold in a percentage which we determined from a code standpoint would be hard to enforce, so it would be more along the lines of, one of the suggestions was looking at floor space, not a floor space that was dedicated to retail or service, so such as in a restaurant, what is the kind of public space. The other item was looking at conditional uses and for the B3 zone as well. One of them, a director, if that was still even a use that had to be within the code?
They cannot find where it was legislated out.
Okay. So it's therefore still, so that, again, the attempt would be to put it as a conditional use in the B3. Alright, so, starting with point one was the principal permitted uses. If everyone could take a look.
And this is originally as you proposed it, none of the changes we talked about earlier have been made, is that correct?
A good amount of the changes have been made from the previous meetings, but not since the, any discussion that occurred at that April one.
Okay, because it's been a long time ago.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Trying to wrap my head around it.
Yeah, then, again, that's why I was listing these, those four items, is what was discussed at that April one. So, B3, it had provided, what it done, it's kind of combined principal permitted uses with the limitations for those use. So if it's, you know, included retail and service establishments, the restaurants, listed automotive services and gasoline stations, entertainment, office, convenience business, residential, if it's above a, other principal permitted use within the district, hospitals, animal hospitals, commercial recreation, building trades, bowling works, miscellaneous trades and businesses, contractor yards, agriculture, sexually oriented businesses, sweepstakes, internet cafes, and that was the extent to the principal permitted uses, and then all the limitations. The limitations that were listed presently in B3 really was not, for the most part, modified. The ones that were modified was that residential had to be above a principal permitted use, that it added restaurants, or it's specifically spelled at restaurants, let's put it that And added office and convenience business. Those are the main ones that were addition there. I mean, off the bat, is there any principal permitted use that you, someone think is missing?
So when you say, wait a second, where is the restaurants in here?
Restaurants is under retail and service establishments in the proposed one. In the, we had a eating and drinking establishment-
Oh, I see, 3A.
Yeah, that allowed drive-ins, drive-throughs, eating and drinking places, the 200-foot. So it just sort of quantified where it was and what use it would be established under.
So Nicholas, as you see it, then, what would, how would this change what's going on in the city now, any of these uses? It's a very comprehensive assortment. I was looking at all the limitations that were on sexually oriented businesses and-
Yeah, that was from a city council, I believe, that dates from. So it was very-
We'll have to go over that again, too.
I just wondered about if there was anything, you know, it's so, it's so comprehensive, it's just any, is there anything that's not in here?
Well, I don't understand, you've removed the drive-in, drive-through, and eating and drinking-
It was a conditional use.
It's now conditional, it's on page 10 or 13.
And that was also for discussion when we got, talked about conditional uses, was that the trailers and drive-through windows, that's something that should be a conditional use, should it just be a permitted use in this zone?
So, if you look at, say, right, very close, 230407, no building customarily used for night operations, which we don't have many of at all, but, except for restaurants and that sort of thing.
Well-
But within 100 feet, I mean, that's hardly even worth bothering with, is it? I mean, as a limitation, I just wonder if other codes around have a larger distance, maybe not, but, just, you know, just an idea.
Yeah, I think, well, 200 feet is what the restaurants were.
Mm-hmm. And this is for a milk or bakery?
Yeah, the other ones that had the sort of same kind of limitations, where the night operations, as you said, which was 100, the hospitals had to be 200 feet from an R-zone. Automotive was only 50 feet from an R-zone.
So Stimson Avenue splits an alley, I mean, Stimson Avenue north side is on an alley goes right to, before it gets to Morris Avenue?
Thanks.
And so that would effectively zone out any night operations along that area, is that correct, because of the 100-feet limitation even?
Well, what, this was recently, came up with the permit office on the, and the BZA on the Jackio's Brewery expansion into the former glass factory or cheese barn. They were 75 feet, if I remember correct, from, in our zone, and they received a variance from the BZA.
But that's definitely more of, almost an industrial area, isn't it? I mean, as it was in the past.
Question. I have a question. If you look at our current, under A3, the eating and drinking establishments, that 200-foot distance is specific to the drive-in, drive-through places, am I correct? That's always been my understanding, not specifically to restaurants.
Well, but it, yeah, it's a-
So now if we're going with the proposed, we're saying that any restaurant has to be 200 feet from an R1 or an R2, but if you look at the next page, under C-
Entertainment could be 100.
Entertainment, that might be nightclub, theater, billiard parlor, which a lot of those presumably have even later hours, and a restaurant-
Right.
Are only 100 feet away from an R-zone. I'm just, I'm concerned about that, that 200-foot for a restaurant on Stimson Avenue, North Court Street, the north side of East State Street, we're down, we're talking about downzone and all those R2s, R1s. If we're going to have either a loud amount of formings, or we're going to be, we might run into some issues with even what we can permit in existing B3s.
Yeah, I see, I, the way I read that, because of how it was, drive-in, drive, comma, drive-through, comma, and eating and drinking places, comma, provided the principal buildings shall be at least 200 feet. So I, I thought it was sort of all-inclusive, not just specifically the drive-in.
If it says "and."
Yeah, so-
The old one is, but the new one would not be?
The new one, well, again, I did not change the, I mean, this is all for what the discussion is, I did not change the 200 feet, but I think Paul's making a very good point that, you know, if anything, maybe it should be treated the same as what we're going to treat the entertainment, that at least those two uses should have the same distance requirements.
It would be time to throw in, but I think part of the reason was there was the outdoor patio, you know, the, the distance for those, if the business is going to be in a R3 or a B3, and is a restaurant or a bar, in order to have an outdoor patio, then it must be 200 feet from the residential, or the restaurant. We get that question asked a lot, and there's really no clarity right now.
Clarity, zoning? Interpretation?
Okay.
The 200 feet was indeed placed there in order to protect the residential nature of the neighborhood, so.
Yeah.
And you think about the people on Morris Avenue and beyond, northward, all requested to have their area made into, from an R2 to an R1, so the distances, I mean, they are really close to those restaurants along Stimson.
Even when it was an R2?
Mm-hmm. It was an R2 in the back in the day.
Yes.
And it's a, as you go up the hill, then there's a topographical difference, but, I mean, it just, I think 200 would, at least from my point of view, would be preferable for any new development. I mean, the smell that entices you into the drive-through, 24/7 is really obnoxious, for example.
Yeah. The, and there is a distinction made in the current code, as well as in this proposed one, between all R-zones and the R1 and R2. So in other words, like restaurants, right now, couldn't be 200 feet from an R1, R2, but they could be right adjacent to an R3, so. So in other words, so Stimson's a good example, again, because to the south, you could be up against an R-zone, but if you're on the north side of the street, you couldn't be.
And there's quite a bigger, a much bigger buffer, not that we would make it so specific to that area, it's just the application.
Using that example.
Since B3 is so comprehensive, it seems that we need to look at all the implications.
Okay, so that's-
So I'm like, what are we hearing now? So you're saying actually we should go with the 200-foot for every, for entertainment, as well as for the restaurants? Okay.
Well, at least two of us feel that way.
And would you say for 200 feet for all, any R-zone, or just for R1 and R2?
R1 and R2, I think. At least that's what I'm thinking.
It's okay with me.
Thank you. Okay.
And John, when you talk about the beer gardens, et cetera, et cetera, that's an interpretation of whether the business is being conducted outside or inside?
Yeah.
And that's not addressed in any of this code right now?
Not really.
Okay.
Because it's, the way that I thought the law director's office about it is, McDonald's, for example, they have their outdoor playground, you purchase the food inside, and then you could take it outside and sit there and eat, so therefore that would be legal, because the transaction's not occurring outside, the transaction's occurring inside. But what's to say that the bar or restaurant, they tell us they're going to do that same thing, but how do we know if there's not a waitress coming outside to tend to them? So, to maybe define some way, I don't, and I'm just throwing it out there, that this-
Do you have a suggestion? I'd like to see it, add it in a more systematic way.
I can work on that, definitely.
Okay, but really, that would fall under the B1, all businesses service processing should be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, and shock paid as, story above, plain grade, et cetera, et cetera. The old one would say, all businesses service processing should be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, except for automobile sales, service stations, loading, unloading, operations, parking, outdoors display. If you took that as the, as the gospel, or something like that, I mean, basically the interpretation, yeah, it can be any activity outside, including beer gardens, or even McDonald's, should be taken inside. I mean, it's services, businesses, processing.
Right.
I mean, that's what the, that's the gray area right there.
So a clarification would clean it up, and allow it in zones where it's not an obnoxious activity?
I'm tasking you with the item, the B1 there, to try to-
I mean, I don't think anyone here is opposed to, you know, the McDonald's playground, or the, you know, the outdoor gardens on East State Street.
They would be though, if, again, what I was just going to ask is, are you making the distinction between a beer garden that doesn't have a sound system, which is probably the biggest thing? I mean, if somebody, so if they have a waiter or a server going through the back, serving drinks, people in the rural, in the R1s or R2s don't necessarily hear that, it's just when, A, you have an audio system, or B, if the level of yelling, laughing, whatever, gets extreme. So in essence, if, like a McDonald's had some sort of kids thing, and there's 200 kids outside at 8 o'clock, or something like that at night, and they're creating a loud noise, is, would something like that be regulated?
Right now, no. I mean, so maybe that's what we say.
Is that a suggestion that you're talking about? Or do we need to make a distinction between audio systems that might be outside, that seem to be, from what I understand the complaints are coming from, is when you have like a loud music system that can be heard into the neighborhoods?
That would fall under the noise ordinance, so, I mean, with the audio systems. And so with the, it's just, I think, the general talking-
Just to buzz the crowd.
Adjacent to residential zone, the clanking of bottles, adjacent to residential zone. So, you know, I think, I'll work something out, maybe that's where the 200-foot comes into play.
So in that case, the B2D, why isn't the B2D then, in the same, the 200 versus the 100? Because I think that was some of the issues we talked about when we had taken up the issue of taking the 2D and merging that, or melding that into the B3, that council rejected, if I'm not mistaken.
Now, what we were doing, we're trying to encompass the far north block into the B2D.
Yeah, which is B3, yeah.
But if you have the 100, you're protecting, it would seem to me, the residential area is less than you would be with a B3, with the 200.
Okay. Let's see what's going on here.
Just gonna have to play with it.
You'll what?
Just gonna have to play with it, see what you can come up with.
Sharpen your pencil.
Okay, so the biggest difference, you're saying, in the old code, was that the B2D allowed entertainment, nightclub theaters, billiard parties, et cetera, et cetera, within 100 feet of any R-zone. The B3, as it stood in the old code, of course, says eating and drinking establishments, which of course included restaurants, I believe, said 200 feet from any R1 and 2-zone. So, actually, at that point, the B3 was more restrictive in terms of placement of eating and drinking establishments, whereas the B2D was not.
Right, which is a point I tried to make way back when.
Yes. I think, yes, I think John Wharton made the same take when he was trying to denote that it was a little bit, was more different. I think the heights were also the other one, too.
I mean, we all have to admit, Uptown is its own little creature, and we definitely want to have a vibrant Uptown, so, okay. It's just that we weren't successful in having-
Convincing council.
Taking that final thought.
Right. Well, right now, this change that's being proposed, right, is to have the B3 have an entertainment that, any entertainment use has to be 200 feet from R1 and R2.
Which one?
That's what's right now being proposed. And B2D currently says 100 feet from any R-zone. So if that were to, if B2D would be changed to the same thing, where it was 200 feet from any R1 and R2, that would again allow, and if you look up there on the map, B2D's surrounded by B3 and R3. So it would now allow entertainment to be right against R3, R3 parcel, whereas right now, in its current code, it would only, you'd have to have 100 feet.
For any zone.
For any R-zone.
Residential zone.
Any residential zone. And I got, I'm saying, that's one poss, right now, we're looking at B3, but if we were to say in B2D, we're going to make that same change, it would off-
I just don't see that working with the existing businesses that we have, I just, I guess that's why I think there is this little B2D, I don't know-
Well, wouldn't make any change in B2D.
Local controls.
If you think about, wouldn't make any change in B2D, would actually allow more entertainment to go in. Because right now, they have to be 100 feet from, well, I guess, yeah, it would be-
That's the same right now in the B3, that-
Wouldn't restrict any.
Well, if you read 230407A, principal permitted use, any use permitted and is regulated in the B2 and the B2D, I think we might be conflating entertainment with eating and drinking establishments, those are two separate things.
Yeah, if we define-
So entertainment is permitted right now, 100 feet.
We're just doing 200 feet.
Right.
That's a whole nother discussion, I actually do have some proposed changes to that other code that would then have to be incorporated.
So before we do, before we do this, do we need to, since the word entertainment is used so often throughout this, do we need to, first of all, clarify what entertainment?
I think, I think it falls under-
Sexually oriented. I guess that's what I was saying, that we, I do have some proposed changes to bring forth in our sexually oriented businesses.
Do you have the code there, so you could read the definition of entertainment?
And we define sexually oriented?
Entertainment?
Entertainment?
I don't think it's defined there, I think this is the only definition.
Well, then let's find a definition for that as well, then.
Right now, it's only defined as nightclub theaters, billiard parlors, pool halls, bowling alleys, and similar enterprises.
And we've defined sexually oriented.
To the T.
Okay.
Yeah, because that was a little-
To the courts.
So to speak.
Yeah.
Let's see, we have definitions in there, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, got to the definition of retail and convenience, hold up, last time to do that.
I mean, I'm just bringing up also, as far as the 2D, just in terms of what eventually might happen with Fern, because, you know, how does that affect that going down the road, since that is trending more towards a residential, and it seems to be in a little bit of an island on its own, in terms of, it's currently B3, if I'm not mistaken, so.
As is Rose, on the other side.
There's nothing in the 23, chapter 23 here about entertainment, and there is nothing, let's see, there's nothing in the-
Famous 99.
Chapter 99, which is the definitions, goes from dwelling unit to easement, egress, enforcement, and essential services.
Yes, entertainment, like I said, it was only defined within the code as the bowling alleys pull out. So are you, Paul, do you want to make your suggestion to how to, are you suggesting that it be grouped in with sexually oriented business, and that sexually oriented business be-
No, no.
On the side, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I feel like, I think that's what RJ was asking, that is, that is defined.
That is a separate-
We have our priorities, right?
Yeah, 1,000 feet would be tough for any-
Yeah. I mean, I can go out there and do a puppet show on Court Street, but I probably can't take off my clothes on Court Street.
My question that I have is, entertainment is defined 230406A, but what's to say, is eating and drinking not, an eating and drinking establishment not an entertainment establishment? So we're, how do we separate if we're saying one of them's 100 feet away, and the other's 200 feet away?
I'm sorry, we were talking about maintaining that 200 feet.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
In B3.
Yeah, what I was hearing up here is that they should be, the entertainment in parking, or not, the entertainment restaurants and eating establishments should be uniform in distance, and from which zone.
And the argument would be that these are but against residential zones, R1 and 2, in a place where you would not normally expect the noise and the olfactory stimulation.
The trade-off would be taking any lim, not, basically allowing both of those uses to be, to have no distance requirement from an R3.
So we'd modify the B2D, so saying instead of 200 feet from, 100 feet from any R-zone, it'd be 200 feet from any R1, 2-zone, is that what we're talking about?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Can you, while we're on the topic, I would recommend we look, go to page 4 of 11 on the existing, under B1. A3, eating and drinking places, restaurants, not including entertainment or dancing, and not including drive-in or drive-through, are just entirely permitted in R1 without, or B1 without any distance requirements. My, I, I think what I, my own opinion on this might be that we separate restaurant from drive-throughs, or outdoor operations, or, I don't see why a restaurant, just a generic restaurant, whether it's a cafe, whether it be an Italian restaurant, whether it be a pizza parlor, or whatever, should, needs to be 200 feet from a residential, in a B3 zone, but not in a B1. I could see where a drive-through, you might want to have a distance, I can see where outdoor, eating and drinking, you might want to have a distance requirement because of those other issues, but a restaurant per se, I don't see where there's an issue with that being adjacent to an R1, or an R2, or an R3. That's just my own opinion on it.
I think would they need to go in and get a permit then, if they decided to open up some form of entertainment within the restaurant?
Depending on how we word it, sure, yeah. I mean, again, it's all in the wording, I'm just saying, if you've got a restaurant, to me, I don't see where having a restaurant adjacent to a residential zone is necessarily a conflict. The conflict I can see would be with outdoor operations, with eating and drinking, with patios-
Drive-throughs.
With drive-throughs, those are the issues that I see, so I'm not sure why, just saying any restaurant has to be 200 feet away, I don't, I don't see where that's a benefit, especially when you look at a B1 zone, which is specifically designated for local business.
Could we stop for a second?
If that's acceptable, why is it not in a B3?
Okay.
Wait a second now, when we were dealing with this before in B1, I thought we had- When we were dealing with this before in B1, I thought we had come up with a way to make it much more of a localized business that would be allowed interpreted.
Right.
I don't think I see it in here, but didn't we go through, I thought we saw it through that. I was dreaming, maybe.
Yeah, well, the idea was that B3 was more auto-accommodating.
And the other one's more local.
Yeah.
Yeah, the old one, basically, A, 230404, B1, principal permitted use, any local retail businesses, services, establishments, supplying commodities and performing services primary for the residents of the neighborhood.
But if you look at our B1 zone, it's the south side, it's Richland Avenue, that's all auto-oriented. There's nobody who lives on.
Well, the flood zone may take care of that, right?
There's nobody in the, the south side subdivisions that walks to those places.
B1 is like the, where Village Bay grew.
There's a couple, well, yeah.
And it would be.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, B2's on the, is Richland Avenue.
And maybe in the future, that would be a place where we would have mixed use. I mean, the sort of thing that you really want to see now.
Right.
All right, let's stay on.
Okay, we've kind of jumped to B2, B2D and B1, so I'm not sure.
Since it's like a nest at a.
It is, I agree. Otherwise, we'll never accomplish if we keep jumping.
I hear what you're saying, but the other thing on B1 that I had from my previous notes was from Nancy, you had operating hours.
For B1?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that B1 would have, okay.
Or you want to put something in there?
I just, thank you.
We're still on B3. I think we had jumped to B2, B2D and B1, so I'm not sure.
Since it's like a nest at a.
It is, I agree. Otherwise, we'll never accomplish if we keep jumping.
I hear what you're saying, but the other thing on B1 that I had from my previous notes was from Nancy, you had operating hours.
For B1?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that B1 would have, okay.
Or you want to put something in there?
I just, thank you. So, where are we back to B3?
Let's stick on B3. I made a note of that for B1 as well. B3, we looked at restaurants, we looked at entertainment, we kind of skipped over automat, or automotive services and gasoline, gasoline stations shall be at least 50 feet from any R zone and shall have no openings adjoining the R zone other than stationary windows and fire escapes, which is pretty much verbatim what's in the current code. Convenience business was added to this, which convenience business is, the last page includes definitions, it's pretty much the off-hours convenience store. After-hours.
That's five, you mean?
Residential, this is what had some considerable discussion, and was kind of the impetus for these zoning changes. That one includes dwelling units only when located above other permitted principal uses within district, which the subsection applies. And one of the requests was, could we define a percentage of the, of the parcel that is developed by that permitted principal use in order to.
Percentage of the building.
Percentage of the building, correct.
Building, not parcel.
Well, B3, it's kind of, you, there is no limit to the amount of the parcel that can be developed.
That is correct, but if you do it to the building, then it.
So, yeah, but if we just treat it from a building standpoint.
Let's see, do we have a convenience business definition?
It's, I included it at the end of this, we did it.
Okay, all right.
But it was one of the ones that we had previously, the old code said, had defined, I believe it is B2.
Is that the last page?
Was any convenience business or general business or services establishment. And so, the idea with all these changes was try to get away from these very generic, you know, where you couldn't, you didn't know what a convenience business is, or a general business, or a services establishment. So, that's what the definitions on the last page.
It's, it's your, it's your speed Z's and things like that, without saying any business name, that's what you're.
Gas stations, both growth stations, gas stations?
Quickie marks.
There you go.
Does not include a business as solely a primary restaurant. So, convenience.
But there's no.
Where's fast food in here anyway?
There's no distance requirement under a convenience business.
If it sold gas, there would be a 50-foot requirement, but other than that, no. And there wasn't one before, but again, I don't know what they thought a convenience business was. It could be, I mean, it would make sense to have it the same as whatever the automotive services and gasoline.
Which is only 50 feet, no?
50, yeah, and that current code is 50 feet.
And, you know, just think about, it was written in 1969, think about what was on the corner.
Gas stations all over the place.
Yeah, lots of gas stations, corner stores, stuff that's totally gone, drugstores.
I think if we're talking distance, we need to include distance.
Is it from the edge of the property? And so, you think about the gasoline station on the corner of Stimson and.
Elliott.
Elliott. And it's 50 feet, right? Because the street's 50 feet wide.
Okay, but how about the one on May and East State?
That's the one I was.
There is another, yes. And the.
Oh, wait a second, that's not a B3, that's a B, is that a B1?
I don't know.
That's a B1.
It's a B3, I think.
No, I don't think it is.
Oh, you're right, it's a B1.
Yeah. Okay, so that one is even more non-conforming, right?
No, the B1's only on the north side of East State.
So, what's on the south side?
Brown's B3.
Okay.
They were going to change it, but then, permit was issued.
Okay, so there's a case where we have one with as, you know, as well within 50 feet of an R zone.
And if you were arguing, you could say that the houses are in the wrong zone, but, but they're making a lot of money to their owners, I think.
The houses are in the wrong zone.
Yeah, they're in a B zone.
Oh, okay.
They're not on the second floor.
But, okay.
We know those houses were there prior.
Yes. Yes, I was.
When Route 50 was there, you mean, or after?
Yeah, when, yeah, I think so, the former. That's right.
Do we have any convenience businesses in the city that are not related to gas stations?
I don't know. What do you call convenience, a busy day market on Stimson?
Yeah, that's.
I'd call that a grocery store.
What?
It's a grocery. I mean, that's what gas stations are now. They make their money off beer, wine, cigarettes, and.
Also, video parlors.
Well, and the other thing is, I sort of particularly put in hours in there. In other words, the idea is that if it's, you know, the convenience store, it's open during the day, it's not a big deal to anyone, but it's that if it's, you know, basically open during the night, 11 to 5. And that's where the distance requirement might come in for that type, you know, business that's open after hours is already sort of being.
I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't. I don't, I mean, they're essentially operating a large majority of them 24/7.
Most of the gas stations in town seems like closed down.
You'd have something like the Union Street Market.
It's like a ghost town down there.
The go-marks are now staying open all night.
Let's see.
Which one does?
All the go-marks. They just changed over to the old Snookas.
All right, so, I do, you know, I'm aware that we do have some other people in the audience that probably plan on speaking as well, so I don't want to keep going on this for too long, because it is, we're not going to get it solved today.
What's our homework?
I think the homework is to, let's, let's focus on the principal permitted uses right now and their limitations. So, that would be.
Of the B1s.
The B3, let's just stick to the B3s. So, right now, we're looking at, are the uses that we have listed, are those the right ones? Do we need to include more? And what, are there limitations to those? So, such as convenience business. Does it work in that zone? And should there be a distance requirement to any other? We'll focus on that and keep, keep beating this one through.
Okay. Did we resolve the fact that we're going to be keeping the restaurants at 200 feet and the entertainment at 200 feet? Is that what I was hearing?
I'm hearing that most people are leaning that way, but I'm sure.
It's a proposal, you could say.
Okay, I just was wondering if we're trying to be consistent.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think we've left, is that the 200 feet, but to R1 and R2, not to R3.
And the residential dwelling above permitted principal uses within a district where the subsection applies, it's number six on page 713. This has to do with residentials above the place, I guess?
Yeah, yeah.
And you wanted.
Partic, one of the things is, we, was discussed, was should there be a percentage of the building that is the principal permitted use? You know, does it have to be 50% the principal permitted use before you can include residential?
You mean the ground floor?
I'm not saying what the percent, but, you know, is there a percentage and what is that?
Well, if it's below 50%, I imagine it's no longer principal.
It's, see, it sounds like that to me, yeah.
Okay.
So, in other words, that would be, that would be a considerable difference, just as the 200 feet from the existing code, right? Because existing.
On entertainment, yeah, was.
No, 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 I'm talking about the floor and the principal use and the percentage developed.
Yeah, that would be a considerable change. The present one in B3 is just.
Nothing on its first floor.
Yeah. All right, we will table a discussion to the next meeting.
Okay, I probably want to look at all the distances. I know that we're probably pulling them over from other parts, but bottling works within 100 feet. I know we had a, you know, zoning board thing on that.
Right.
Miscellaneous trades and businesses, at least 50 feet, that's kind of wide open there.
Yeah, I agree. I think they should all be like that.
Yeah, maybe, John, could you give me an example sometime of that? Miscellaneous, blah, blah, blah.
There's, I can, yeah, we can go through and start looking at uses. I mean, a perfect one I throw out all the time, it's not, I can't find anywhere in code, daycares, which are obviously more prominent today than when our code was written.
Yeah, we need to get that in the.
You know, where does it go in?
Screaming children, smell diapers, those.
That's that 200 foot that might come in handy. I like. Any other communication?
Seriously, I'll never forget working the code, and the complaint came in that the neighbor's house was full of trash, and what it was were kids' toys.
All right, let's keep this going. If you don't mind, I'm going to rearrange this, reports from city planner and director of code enforcement. We're going to put you after opportunities for citizens to speak, are you guys both okay with that?
Well, I think they may be here to speak to the case that we were just discussing.
Yes, so that's why I just wants to flip it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah.
Right, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I wasn't, the opportunities for citizens speaks about items not covered on the agenda, or let's say on the agenda, would be fine.
So, we're going to move that up, okay, before the reports. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Mr. Knowle, if you could go up to the, I think the table's fine, it's microphone. That way, you can pick up to our TV audience.
He's got sign-in, too?
I don't know. There is a sign-in right there at the table, if you just sign your name and state your street.
I think there was briefly some discussion about B3s, percentages of the retail or commercial underneath a B3. There was an establishment of, have you any thoughts on that? Would you think of going with it? And then my other second question would be B3 in a relationship to a building relating to a residential building. Prime example would be, again, the BP store on Richland Avenue, where the closest residential was the Corbone House up on top of the hill, which is probably 500 feet away from the gas station. But if it's property line to property line, nothing could be put on that corner like a gas station. And then my other concern is if you start limiting times for things like gas stations, you're going to a lot of upset residential people who work night shifts, who may not be able to get gas when they're going to work because they sleep during the day. Those are just three issues I asked about when we're talking about B3. And of course, then we've got the famous alley, or what's it, Kern? Is it Kern? What's the name of that alley?
Burn.
Burn. And it, and how it's zone B3 and a requirement of retail under that or commercial under that, when all the commercials in that particular street have all gone under, because it doesn't fit into the nature of a, of a B3 for a number of traffic going by those stores. Now, yeah, there's walking traffic, but it's still not, no one's going to open a business up on that level to be able to handle that. So, there's, you know, an issue like that with a B3 then, where it used to be Bill's Safety was there, it used to be the Universal Natos place, it used to be on that street. It went to a.
Baldino's Pizza.
Yeah, it was also was a t-shirt store. None of them could survive in that particular zone as a B3 required under the under, and they all went to a different form. Bill's Safety site is parking underneath it, residential above. And so, we're finding some issues in an area like that where, yeah, it was made B3 because you had B3 on East State Street, you had B3 on Carpenter and Court Street, so it was kind of sandwiched between all those. But at the same time, a B3 can't survive there, because no one's going to rent a storefront, put a business there, because unless you give it to them for free at that point then. So, those are the things I, I have some concerns about hearing your discussion.
Those are, that's one of the reasons why I brought the Fern Street up earlier, is because, you know, I personally don't see the viability as a business street any longer. So, how do you treat that, you know, in its new form, which is probably more rentals, something of that nature? So, does the B3 application, does that make sense for that street anymore? But if you do that, you're, again, I guess it's already in an island, more or less, surrounded by other zones, but again, how do you treat that realistically? I mean, Nancy brought up, you know, some of the things that are no longer with us, like the gas stations uptown, the tire shops uptown, things of that nature. And I think that Fern is finally, you know, once the plumbers, was it Strawn, I think, left that street, you know, I think that at that stage, it's become more of a commercial, or more of a residential type setting. And, you know, what do you, what do you do? How do we handle that in the future? And as far as, like, when you also broach the subject of the B3, as far as a commercial space underneath on the first floor, you know, I had just brought that up for, for topic of discussion down the road, because I thought there might be more flexibility, given that there's, there's more stringent standards as far as with the Shade Tree Commission, with parking, with some of the other things that externally are now expected to go around a building that, you know, and with technology, the way it is, do you need as much office space, as much commercial space as you once did? So, is it worth talking about in terms of reducing the dimension or the percentage of that bottom floor that needs to be used for commercial purpose, where you could do something else within that, you know, if we define, if we define a proper percentage?
Laundry mats, those things, which are kind of a service-oriented service for a high-density R3 environment. You know, those make sense, but, you know, is a real estate office going to locate there? No. First of all, you've got to fight uptown traffic, and you've got to find parking there, and that's.
But you do have smaller businesses, more smaller businesses that seem to be inclined to, to open up around the uptown area, tattoo shops, you know, whatever. You could probably put a CD shop in there, music shop, in a space that, in half the space that you once needed to, just because, again, the technology has reduced the necessity. And I'm just suggesting that as, as, you know, flexibility, you know, the idea that that is an option to be used, you could maybe even use that additional parking underneath for parking, you know, to, to take care of some of the parking issues that we've had before the board before. So, you know, it's just a discussion point that, you know, I wanted to bring up and, you know, feedback from the community is great, but, you know, when, when I talk with people, they don't need as much floor space as they used to, you know, that's the bottom line.
Well, okay, looking, let's look at Fern, for instance. We tried moving that over to a B2D at one point, I believe that was in our mix. If you think, you know, realize. If you think, you know, realize we could always turn around and say, let's suggest putting it as an R3, shifting that line over. There's nothing says we have to try and, you know, Court Street could be converted straight down the line as, as B2D, which was rejected before, but, you know, would rezoning, rather than changing the zoning laws, do we just rezone? One possibility.
Possibly.
Two, that when you talk about percentage of principal use, that's kind of a nebulous one because, again, well, how do we cover that? The alternative, of course, is just to take out, I think, the actual prohibition of residence on the first floor is put in in 2002 or '04. I forget. I think that was Ed Baum's change of the zoning code at that time. I was sitting in the audience, I just remember that, this is not an old prohibition, it's a fairly new, and it's not working. That's something we should, should, do we just flip it back now? Do we, and how much do we want to flip it back? Which is what that discussion is, but there's nothing says we just can't say that's not...
If it's now an R3.
Just in keeping though with the fact that, you know, we, within the last year, we, we did the 60-40...
Requirements, yeah.
Requirements there. So, I mean, in terms of a B3, in terms of commercial use on the first floor, you know, I was just asking, can we do something of a similar nature?
But if you do the whole code, then you're going to have a huge impact throughout the city.
Oh, yes.
Whereas, as the mayor said, if you just move the R3 to the alley, you could possibly solve the problem. Another way to look at it, of course, is that there's so much density there that it's kind of moved out, the businesses, you can't find a space to park. I mean, you know, you can either look at it as a problem caused by no foot tra, or no traffic, but it's clearly a place that would have a different set of circumstances because it's an old railroad right away. And there's a topographic difference, it's downed. And, you know, I, if I were going to the zoning board, that would be my argument that it's a...
This is the same argument with the BP gas station on Richland, even though it's a, but in our zone. You know, if you were, if you need to, to change that or go through BZA, they basically, the topographical, the hillside...
It's one of the things that's allowed.
...be your finding, saying, I am limited, I can't take the hill away, or the hill is actually in addition to what you have there.
It's a tunnel going up there. It's also just in the way between more...
But that, okay, in other words...
But I agree with what you were just saying because I think Fern either belong, designates maybe as a B2 or as an R3 more than it is as a B3.
I would have to go and review the R3s and make sure it fits. So that's the other side of two. I mean, as far as I know, the, the percentage of coverage, lot coverage is R2 and R1, if my memory is correct on that.
R3 as well.
And then on the other side, of course, we...
R3s is all Rs.
See, it's now...
All Rs. Okay, so we'd have to be looking at a position there, percentage coverage in that.
Right.
We shouldn't.
Hands up.
That's where B3 somewhat is nice, in a sense, because it is a dense environment. It's an uptown, close environment. You go to an R3 and your setbacks are going to kill that street anyhow because the lots are only, was it 50, 60 foot deep? So you end up with this, which I designed...
Topography. I mean, you definitely have an argument for a variance or for rezoning it based on the topography.
Yeah.
What I think I hear him saying is he doesn't want to rezon.
No, no, I'm saying it's R3, you can forget R3 on, that's even worse.
We're trying, we're trying to say, how do we address the problems that have been brought up?
There's some other rezoning that could happen as well. People who have interest, you know, we could have a whole bunch of different rezonings. And I think it's probably time to do it, but as we've seen, somebody, everybody has an interest, keeping what's there.
And really, the discussion we're having is how to adjust, we've, there's some suggestions of where these things wouldn't work, what we have now, or what we need to clarify. Do we do it by changing the zone or changing the law? And those are two different ways of doing it.
Well, I mean, one of the people that was here to talk had a specific, yeah, but there aren't that many left to redo, any problem with changing the zone, but I wouldn't want to just do it because one person needs it. I don't think that's good practice. I'd like to see a more comprehensive look at other places where we could change it to.
Yeah, but there is a variance argument for, you can't develop what is permitted by code there is usually the reason that you would be granted a variance.
But the topography is...
But if you have, for instance, the overflow on Carpenter, you have the buildings that are on Carpenter. What if at some point they wanted to, somebody came along with deep pockets and wanted to expand something that would begin, begin on Carpenter and wanted to extend it through to Fern?
This would be the problem with rezoning, yes.
Or else they could go and do a putt, since that hasn't changed.
But I think that the issue is, is, I think zone is fine. The issue is, can you consider parking on the lower level of business in the uptime of B3?
But that...
Can't hear any cases concerning that.
That creates a problem for everyone else, though. I mean, that's a very specific need for a small number of people. Can we solve it a different way?
Yeah, well, but, but what we're trying to do is the issue of retail under residential in a B3. In a B3, R3, in, in this specifically, that alley won't work because you can't get the setbacks, you can't get the percentages, so nothing's going to happen. So you'll end up with half a dozen houses that are questionable for quality of housing. And while on the other hand, you can create the density in where you want the density of the uptown area and keep the kids there and avoid the, what we call the university blight that goes out into your R1s elsewhere then, so, you know.
I, I just need to know, did I miss a presentation at council about your proposed project or is that what this is?
We haven't even gotten that close.
Pardon me?
We haven't gotten to that point. We're trying to, we've come up with one concept, we got, pretty much said, don't bother with that. We've come up with a secondary concept which says that's not going to go through either. And so we're just kind of stymied on where to go. I think to propose the last one, you know, yeah, we met all the setback requirements, we're down to the issue of, of retail underneath an R3 and how big that has to be because of the nature of that particular site or anything on that street, other than maybe the other side of the street. You're going to have to have parking put in at grade level, and if you put parking on grade level, even if you stack your parking, which we're proposing now, still only leaves you with postage stamp size area left for commercial. And so you fight those issues then.
So just, I mean, have we been apprised of this formally in a...
The original application was submitted and refused based on numerous issues, height, parking...
So we haven't heard the proposed number of beds and what have you. I just want it out there, Mike, that this is essentially a project that you want to do on that street.
The most recent one was a sketch that was brought in from the afternoon.
Res zoning generally.
Yeah, well, yeah, but you, that's how you come across these things. You take a look at the site, you delve great amount of time into it and trying to figure, how do you make two lots work in that kind of a zone?
Right, but I just feel like with your, your input here today on our proposed changes under the business code or what we will do is actually self-interest of this.
Well, yeah, but you, he had the same scenario on Stimson Avenue with Wasserman's project where he wanted R3 above and parking below in that B3. So no, it's not self-interest. Take another prime example is Athens Sun and Fund on Richland Avenue, which we own, and we worked around the codes with that one. Now, when we could make work only due to the fact is we had a captured tenant, which we convinced that he would be dumb to move on East State Street because he couldn't afford it. And so we were able to have a tenant move into our lower level retail with above it.
In Fern Alley right now, you could, you could open up a business, right?
Yeah.
You're saying is you, the code won't allow to do exactly what you'd like to do.
No, what I'm saying is, is on Fern Alley with the nature of the slope of the site is if you're going to let that site work, economically speaking, that you have to have residential above then. And no one's going to put a business below because it doesn't make any sense to have only a business on that lower level.
Wouldn't it be not the type of business? I mean, that...
I'm going by reference of a dozen businesses in the last 30 years.
That's assuming you're retatable, not necessarily of, of somebody who may not be actually doing their business right there with lockup. They might be selling things online. They might be providing a service, they might be an accountant.
If they're going to sell things online, they're going to do it out of their house in their basement. I can come up with a half a dozen people I know who does that.
But again, there's businesses, if somebody wanted to open up a business on Fern Alley right now, they could do that. It might fail. Half of all businesses in the U.S. fail in the first 12 months, right?
Correct.
So there's a possibility.
Yeah.
But what you're, what you're saying is the project that you would like to do there doesn't fit.
Okay, what I'm saying is knowing the nature of that zone being the uptown area, the only businesses that are succeeding in that environment is having residential above because they can justify what students want for that area and the fact that they want housing close to Court Street and the bars. Okay? Close enough yet still walk to campus. And so as you look there, and prime example is the old Beal site, which did get a variance, which does have parking underneath it and the apartments above, is doing very well income-wise of sustaining that site then. I would assume if they'd had someone, if they could have got the parking for them, wanted to put a business under there, they would have said, yeah, I will put a business under because the reality of a business is the fact that you don't have to worry every 10 months about a new tenant moving into a, a space. Business, you go for three years to five-year leases. So yes, businesses are better leases to have, but that is a difficult street to, to work with then, involved with the property behind it. The 29 Carpenter, which is on Carpenter there and trying to get a business in the front of that one, it's hard to find a business who's wanting to move into there then because it's not on the mainstream. So we're basically saying is, you know, at that particular location, if you're going to replace those two existing houses, probably the density above is residential. Now, can you get underneath it? No. Can you get enough parking to justify building a building on multi-levels? Because if you put in a multi-level parking garage, which does work on that site, you've got to have the residential above it to justify the cost of $35,000 a parking space in a parking garage.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that...
Let me suggest that, I mean, I think, this could be, yeah, I think it's digressing too far. We, I mean, if this is a project that you want to develop, you know, we can't put this on as a communications in front of the, the planning commission. We've done that before where someone wasn't quite ready to submit, you know, where people came in, were thinking about doing a lot split. Is this something we would entertain or not? That, that would be my suggestion for this particular site.
Yeah, we're far afield at this point.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
The only interest I had was you started talking percentages.
Thanks. And it will, yeah, we'll be all public what we, we go with. All right, thank you, Mr. Noel, for your comments. Mr. Lewis, did you like to speak? Thank you.
Ron Lewis, 15 West Hills Drive, Athens. I just want to respond to a couple of things that were just brought up. You just heard the Wasserman case brought up again, and I hate to say I told you so, but you're going to keep hearing that. One of the things that I, I heard here, I just heard you talking about percentages, it concerns me a great deal. As I pointed out in my responses to previous decisions, the code is very clear at this point, saying only on the second floor and above. That doesn't allow for any percentages, and yet we've done that. So I think the gentleman has, that who just spoke has a point, at least as we've interpreted things so far. I would argue that instead of thinking of changing zones, we think about a whole orientation to the city that suggests that our alleys and side streets could become very profitable business ventures. I just came back from a month in France and I saw little tiny streets that make Fern Street look like a major avenue in which many, many businesses thrive. I think that we could do an awful lot more by selling a vision of the city as a place that has a lot of walking traffic as well as automotive traffic. And I think, I think to start thinking in terms of making spaces more available for more apartments on the ground floors, we need to think in terms of a bigger vision of what the city can be.
I think, you know, actually, the Wasserman project probably speaks right to what I'm talking about because if we had allowed, for instance, percentages there, maybe he could have done something different with that. As far as Fern Street is concerned, what you're probably talking about is, again, what I'm, I'm trying to refer to, smaller businesses that have, that have the need for less floor space, that could take the additional space that's underneath the facility to display things, to have outside, you know, you've got the, the covering. You know, as far as the Fern Street, I, I see what you mean. I lived on Fern Street back in my college days and, and there's really no traffic there. Now, could you develop that with some business? I don't know because, you know, until like, for instance, Donkey came along, that one section of West Washington was not developed. No one ever, students didn't go there. It wasn't a great place to have a, the, a location for a business. So, you know, what I'm just suggesting, again, in terms of percentages, is, is that something do we want to explore with the idea that it would be more advantageous to the fact that it would bring in smaller businesses, businesses that maybe could park underneath the facility, but still have, for instance, tax consultants that are uptown, we have lawyer, attorney's offices, things like that. Do they need all the mammoth floor space that they currently have to, to rent from people or be in facilities that don't give them the type of walk-in that they could possibly get with a smaller facility that they could afford? You know, and I'm looking also in terms of the economics as far as what people can actually afford because you're paying by the floor space when you, when you rent a facility. If you have something smaller, are you more inclined to revisit, come back uptown and, and possibly, you know, regenerate business that way? So, you know, that's what I'm, I'm expressing in terms of the discussion about, and I'm sorry, we're far afield, but, you know, that's, that's, you know, was my suggestion in terms of, you know, reducing, you know, the obligation to, to cover the entire floor space of, of a building at this, at this day and age because I, I just see businesses is turning. And if we are going to expand or regenerate smaller businesses and have them come back uptown to enjoy the density that is available there, you know, is that something to look at?
I, I think you make a, a good point, and I think it is something to be looked at. I would argue that the decision has already been made by this commission to think in terms of percentages because that's what happened on the Wasserman case.
No, we're just talking about formali, I, I'm just suggesting, you know, the idea of formalizing some sort of table by, you know, by which we could measure in the future.
Well, I, obviously, I, I would like to see us stay with the idea of what we currently have as a B3 zone, but I certainly understand your point.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Lewis. All right, now we, no one else is here, so, reports from our city planner and director of code and development, code enforcement, I apologize.
Just a few updates. The, last night, the first meeting of the Athens City Environmental Sustainability Commission met. Members of that commission include Councilwoman Chris Fall, myself, Cliff Hamilton, who's an environmental engineer with the university, was voted to be chair, Ed Newman, a West Side resident, Bernard Debatin, Debatin, an East Side resident, Liz Rhodes, who is a city resident, I'm not sure which neighborhood, and a graduate student from Ohio University's environmental sciences program named Marke Miller. She's a first-year graduate student. They met. We will be meeting, we set a monthly meeting date for ideally the last Wednesday of every month. At 5:30 PM, we'll be meeting in this room. Next meeting is scheduled for November 28th. The commission, we just handed, gave them a, a stack of information to start with, just to start thinking about the role of that commission with respect to the city administration and city council, and they'll start moving forward from there. Additionally, yesterday, I was in Marietta for a meeting that Buckeye Hills Regional Development put on with respect to the state's role and local role with businesses, with hydraulic fracturing. Much of it at this point was, it was more for mature fracturing regions of the county with some of the additional jobs that would be created from a lot of Department of Development and Jobs Ohio talking about services they offer for small businesses and on that issue. Not much really relating to Athens at this point, but, John?
All right, thank you, Paul.
I would like to state that the BZA meeting, the next meeting, has been rescheduled for when...
Wednesday evening, November the 14th, due to the city council meeting on Tuesday evening, the 13th, that week, due to, was it Veterans Day?
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day holiday. We do have a full slate that night. We currently have four cases. I can briefly fill you in. The first one is the city itself, at 38 East Park, requesting a blood damage prevention compensatory storage variance for the construction of the new tanks at the wastewater treatment plant.
So who's representing us on that particular case?
I am.
I just wondered.
So I think we'll be, he might do all right. Case number two is a 115 Central Avenue, and the applicant is requesting to build an attached garage to their house, and they do not meet rear yard or side yard setbacks. Case number three is 55 First Street. The applicant, again, is requesting to put an addition onto the rear of his building and will have, that will not meet rear yard setback on that property as well. And then the fourth case is at 924 East State Street. The applicant is requesting a variance of buff control to allow the construction of a motel with four stories in a B3 zone, where currently three and a half stories are allowed. And I think I need to note that it's not listed on here, that I believe he's over on his height as well. So the structure itself is okay, but he's got the center sign, colonnade thing, so that puts it over. So we will have a full slate that evening.
And that project will come before the planning commission?
That project definitely is a Title 41, so it will come through all the, through the planning commission. This is one that we, I spoke to Paul about it briefly, is Title 41 projects that need variances. It's kind of the unique situation. So what I've been having the parties or applicants do is get their variances first, and then come to the planning commission with variances in hand, because since Title 41 is a site plan review process, so.
All right. All right, any other questions for the planner?
Nope, thanks.
All right, thank you, Beth. Announcements and other business, our next meeting is scheduled for November the 15th at noon. It will be, it's a Thursday again. Not anything else. I appreciate the passion that everyone's displayed and the seriousness to this talks, and our meeting is now adjourned.